Time being seven o'clock, I call Halifax Planning Board back into session. All members present. On the agenda, we have at seven o'clock Ed Brown, Farm A, Pond Street. Seven fifteen, John Peck, Farm A, Mont Ponce Street. Heaven Road Discussion, ongoing business, and general discussions on bylaws to be reviewed. And approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think everybody's breathing a little better today after a couple of hot days, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna give us an explanation of what we're looking at?
Okay, this is our present home, where we presently live.
Pond Street, yeah.
This is Pond Street, yep. This is the Littles. This is a common driveway for the back, our present lot. This is the front lot, which we're proposing to, because this dwelling is way too big now for my wife and I and my brother, who has Down's syndrome. So we're gonna try to build a smaller place up front here, so that is the game plan. Originally, this lot, this was the frontage for this house. And now, we've gone to my neighbor, and we're purchasing this section for the frontage for this, and this will be its standalone frontage now, instead of the down.
Okay, so the driveway for the back house is still gonna stay here?
Yes, that doesn't change. That's a common driveway between these two arms, yep.
Can you have common driveways?
With an easement.
No.
No, it's a shared driveway.
It's shared, yeah.
On paper, on paper, there is room here for another driveway if they wanted to put one in. But we share this, and it's on the deeds. Both have right of ways on here for this house.
For all properties.
Yeah, it's an easement.
Yep.
So we're buying this frontage from Greg, so that this house will now have its own frontage, and then this will have its own frontage, to be a small lot over time.
The only problem that kicks in is by our bylaws, you have to enter, the driveway has to enter over the frontage for the lot.
This has its own frontage here.
Right.
The driveway would have to come from where you're gaining your frontage.
Yeah, I believe the wording isn't just that you have access to the road, it's that's how you use it, is through your frontage. Even though you've proven that you can, you're not proposing.
Our bylaws say no shared driveways, too. But I mean, that's existing in grandfather.
We've shared this driveway for thirty, yeah, thirty years.
Yeah, you might supersede the bylaw.
The reason for that probably is, right, because it's all wetlands, where you have that parcel, latex there.
Mm-hmm. So he could change this over that way, then? Is that what you're saying? And then he could just enter here?
Would...
No, it's not, it's not your law.
Is this, if this easement exists on your deed there, correct?
It does, yep. We just paid to have that done. And we both did it.
Was this part of your lot?
That's me.
And this, too?
No, that's Pond, that's the Pond.
That's actually belongs to Tereshko.
Okay, so your lot right now actually comes through, and this is a proposed line? This line doesn't exist yet, is that true? This twenty-five feet here?
I don't know.
That's the...
It doesn't label whether it's proposed or if that's what's existing.
It must be what's existing.
Yeah, I don't know what the distance, does it go to distance?
No, that's proposed. There's no way, because this is your existing land now.
The existing is right here. That's the existing.
So, yeah, your existing now is this.
Right.
And then out to here.
Yeah.
Sort of, that's just the easement. We drew an easement. Do you own this now?
Yeah.
We own this, we own this, we're buying this.
This right now is coupled with this, correct?
Right. So that line is proposed.
What they're proposing is with this line across, because they only got forty thousand, fifty-one square feet.
But then somehow this is part of that lot right now, right?
Now, this actually goes with...
This is part of this and this. He wanted to keep the Pond because of Steve's dad.
But he wanted access to it.
No, we didn't do that, we didn't end up doing that.
So you have a landlot parcel, it's gonna be useless, technically.
Well, it's a pond.
It's a wet, it's wet, it's total, it's...
But it's gonna be landlocked because of this line.
And because there's, the easement only falls five feet short of where the property line would be.
Will we have to do an easement from here to there?
No. Steve has a right, they already have an existing right of way. There's already an existing right of way over here.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
But it doesn't actually...
What you're doing is you're taking away his connection with this parcel to this.
No, we're not, because he has a right of way here.
But his right of way doesn't actually reach this parcel. So the right of way is gonna come up here to this line.
Isn't this his right of way?
No.
No.
So say, in between these dashed lines would be the right of way, and you see how they don't actually connect from the road to this property? They run parallel.
No, what I'm saying is...
She's not talking about this building, she's talking about this slot down here.
He, Greg, has Tereshko, has a right of way over to here. Because this used to be his well, and this is where his septic, actually, used to be here. So he has a right of way on the book of deeds.
I don't know why that wouldn't be shown.
I don't know why he didn't show, but it is there. It does exist.
We can have, you know, Joe...
Joe, put it back on.
Yeah, we can talk to Greg, but that's, she's correct on that.
It's a lot of right of ways.
Steve originally, that's, his house is where we already had a, I don't even know how many feet it is to run out to where the septic, and that septic failed.
Oh, yeah.
So he...
Well, with all that water.
The other thing I don't understand is that these are different names.
No, they're not.
Yes, and this is Gregory Tereshko, and that says Stefan.
But on the deeds, it says Gregory Tereshko for Steve Tereshko. It's his father who passed away.
Okay.
But this piece here was connected with this piece.
Yes, so our intent is to divide this much off of it.
Right, but what I'm saying to you is, this now becomes not connected. That's what's creating that landlocked piece. And it may have a right of way, but it's still a landlocked piece.
Okay.
Can we, if Joe was to change, it could come up on this side and over to this, to give him access to that piece?
Wouldn't it just be easier to like tack on an extra five feet there if he really wanted to accomplish the same thing?
To go where?
To get access.
Over to the, over to that line.
Yeah, 'cause I imagine you give him access, and he gives you access, right?
Yeah, originally, that's what we were gonna do, that we were gonna give him this corner of our lot for this land as a swap. And then he said, well, I don't want the back, we'll just do the, we'll just, you know, do the front lot what you need.
Why doesn't he just take a little piece of parcel?
Seems like this section isn't gonna accomplish what you wanna do with it anyway, because the driveway, the frontage. This lot doesn't even have any frontage.
Where's the frontage for this one right now?
This is a retreat lot.
This house, this is the frontage right now, technically?
Somehow, back in the day, this got let to be put in, when Joe Webby said there weren't supposed to be two retreats.
Right.
This got put in five, seven, maybe eight years after us.
So twenty years ago.
Yeah.
At least, yeah.
So that's why there's two retreat lots here. If we can keep it the way that we have it, ideally, I would love to make it the two retreat lots as it is right now, and then just do what I need to do on my front lot.
You might, you might be better served to try to gain their frontage, I don't know, 'cause you run into your wetlands.
I mean, is it possible to leave this alone and have it be its own, it's a retreat lot, and have this just okayed with the planning board for my lot? I mean, is this maybe grandfathered or anything, where it's been there forever like that?
Well, it's grand...
To an extent, it is grandfathered, because we won't let you do this now.
No, you would, if this lot weren't here, if you wanted to build this house, your access...
We don't do shared driveways in town.
But for that property, it would be good.
And you don't do retreat lots that are next to each other with the driveways next to each other. You can have retreat lots next to each other, but the driveways cannot be next to each other.
But it's always free now, right?
Right, yeah.
I understand that, but I don't know how that works.
But what we're doing right now is we're taking, we're taking a lot, this whole lot, you weren't a retreat lot before because you had a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
That's correct.
So this was okay.
So now we'd be making this a retreat lot.
Well, you would be, but you've got a hundred and fifty feet of frontage here. But the only problem is, this now is a right of way that you give him for the back lot, which comes out of this, so you're not entering that through its frontage.
So if I, if I, is there a way to make this its retreat lot, like this one? And then do what I need to do to have this?
Technically, it's not a retreat lot.
Okay.
But can they make it a retreat lot?
It's not now, because this is connected, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And if you add this to that, it's still not. But it's, what happens is the access to the lot, that's what's not gonna be meeting the zoning.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
I'd actually have to propose a new driveway.
No, that's a bad idea.
That's all wetlands. That actually, we had a lot years ago that was approved for this back, and that was exactly what was gonna happen. And it was just cost prohibitive, and too much, too much work to replicate everything that they wanted.
Well, here's the other thing that comes in. If this is all wetlands and you can't cross it, then it's a lucidary frontage. Means that you're counting frontage that you cannot really access.
Okay, so do we have options with it, or no? I mean, this is all perked, and we've got everything done on it.
If you do a retreat lot, what's the minimum width you need to maintain all the way to back?
Fifty.
Fifty feet. So theoretically, right, if you made a fifty-foot corridor...
But you can't do them side by side.
No, but if you did it all entirely on your property and provided the fifty-foot right of way there, and then you would have to angle the proposed property up here like that, and you would have smaller property.
They're grandfathered a shared driveway.
Yeah, but you couldn't have, you can't create a retreat lot here because this one already exists. So that way, you can, now, you cannot make this a retreat lot at this point.
Okay.
That's why, that's why we're giving it this amount of...
Yeah.
But it can't, there's no way to use a shared driveway, there's no way to get a...
A bylaws specifically say...
No shared, yeah.
No common driveway.
Even if they're both divisions, I mean, signed off.
Unfortunately, that's cut and dry.
Okay, so do we have any options, or no?
That's why I was mentioning, like, I don't know if this wetlands continues from this, I couldn't tell, but that's what I would think is, at least if you could prove access, that you could get access from your frontage.
Can it come up this way and across and over?
No.
Does it have to, does it have to come up on the outside of the...
You gotta keep that fifty-foot width the whole way back to where it opens up. So what I was thinking was that you could run a fifty-foot corridor theoretically up this edge, but that would impact this parcel that he's trying to keep.
The Pond.
And then this one would have to angle like that, and you'd have to squeeze the building up in the front there. And then, I don't know if you have your full forty thousand...
How much was, do they have here?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
The problem is the way it's set up right now, they only have forty thousand, fifty-one square feet, so I think if you start cutting anything...
So, yeah, so then that's your question about what, the wetlands...
Well, if you start cutting here, you're poaching from there.
Yeah, I know, but you need the hundred and fifty, so...
They're at exactly a hundred and fifty for parcel A right now.
But if you narrow this down, the retreat lot frontage is what? What's the minimum requirement there?
Eighty thousand.
Fifty, fifty-foot frontage with eighty thousand of contiguous uplands.
Right, so you have the eighty thousand contiguous up here, right?
Yeah, this whole thing belongs to it.
And if you ran fifty feet along here, then you have plenty of frontage for what a triangular shaped parcel might look like here, you just have to try and figure out a way to squeeze a house in there.
Yeah, they wouldn't squeeze a house in that.
No.
Is there a solution to zoning? Can they go to zoning with this?
Can't create non-conforming lots.
What if they're pre-not conforming?
Well, is the lot itself non-conforming, or just the shared driveway aspect of it?
It's just a shared driveway.
I think it's just a shared driveway.
That would be, that wouldn't change. Whoever purchased this house would be just doing what we just did for the last thirty-five years.
It's a deed.
I might possibly, you know...
The thing is, is that then the deed changes, so like, whoever buys that doesn't get their deed.
It's a...
You know what I mean? Just, if you were to sell and transfer that, they're not gonna receive the same deed as you have. Because, because what you're selling them is not what you own right now, if you know what I mean. So right now, your deed calls out all of this, or all of that.
Yes, that's right.
So when you convey it to someone else, you're only gonna convey part of it.
Is the house on this one now?
No, that's all filled.
That's just, yeah.
It's all wet.
It's not all wet, but it's more wet down, you know.
I know this isn't wet right here, this part, but I know it gets wet, all in here. The river's over there.
So to your point, you were just talking about just putting a right of way down the edge there, if you put a right of way along that property line there, that might get you the frontage that you need. You just have to build a subdivision where it's supposed to be driveway, and that costs money down.
So that means that they owned it here?
Right of way would be right in this section here?
No, you would run it along the edge here, right? So you run your right of way there, and then you would have frontage for this guy right off the right of way, you'd have frontage for this guy off that, and...
Yeah, that would be having to make a road.
Yeah, you have to make a road.
So who on this strip here? Because this says former line is here.
That's Greg, this is all, this, this, and this is all Greg's.
Right up to here?
The former line was for us. This was the, the, the...
Used to go like this, right?
That's ours.
Oh, this is ours?
So that's probably...
Yeah, that's strip.
This is ours.
So that's probably how they had the retreat lot, because their fifty-foot access really...
They didn't have a retreat lot, they had a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
No, here, this strip right here was here.
Yeah, I have a tax bill for this lot, it goes out there.
Yeah, that was, that was mine.
I get taxed on it.
You've got a lot line coming right here, too.
Yeah, this is a separate lot, right here. From here to here is a separate lot.
So what's this lot line else? This former lot line that...
Okay, so this came down over in this.
This, it came to here. This was a lot.
Then that went back to the original lot, because...
And it perked, and, but he didn't go forward with it because the driveway was too much. So this is already a separate lot. I get a separate tax bill for it.
This was the, that lot line there, did you add this on to the house afterwards?
No, the lot line was here.
That's a, that's a, that's not a wetland line.
No, that's a wetland line.
Our original, the original was all the way out to here, just like that. Those are original.
But see, this says former lot line here, and former lot line here.
That was, that was the one that was subdivided for, for all the, never worked for it.
So prior, prior to building the home...
Oh, okay.
So how did they even do that?
How did they get the house there?
I don't think, that's the lot line.
Because the house probably was there, was it, did the house get an addition put on it?
Yes, but that's not the lot line.
Because the house was probably thirty feet away.
This, this was a lot line, that, when your mom, yeah, this got built after she didn't wanna do, that's exactly what it is. This wasn't here, we did the addition because she was gonna build out here, and then we ended up adding on to our house.
Because you wouldn't have been able to build to the lot line, it's in thirty feet, so you combined the two so you could build it.
Yes. But this is one lot, and this is another.
So that former lot line does currently not exist?
Yeah, I don't see how you would get two, you're saying you get a different...
I get two tax bills.
But at some point, this must have been, I'm just not, I'm confused only because this must have been combined in order to get that house there.
No, this, I still get two tax bills for this over here.
Do we have access to the map right now?
Can you see that?
Is that on the GIS, the council? Some copies of the same...
And two of them.
No, it isn't, no, it isn't. We're getting a tax bill for this lot. Right, he's got this different than what it actually is.
So there's three parcels.
Yeah.
There's planer references, do you want me to put these up?
I don't know, I know that assessors have those things, but I don't know if we could actually get at them.
Oh, you see, is that it right here?
These are all assessing.
See? That's the divided lot, right there.
It is, it's exactly shown on this.
It's shown on the map.
That's filed.
This is a separate lot, that's what I get taxed on.
So this house technically has no frontage right now.
Right.
Wait, which one?
The house.
Yeah, so it's right here.
This is where they go to their frontage right now.
It's a separate parcel.
They don't...
That's proposed, that's not on there.
Wait, where are we?
Yeah, that's not, that's proposed.
Yeah, see, this is their frontage right here.
This was proposed for this.
And then it goes up through, and then they got it.
So this is...
But this is wild.
This is the house that's there.
This is the Littles, this is Tereshko.
Yeah.
This is my house I live in, right here. Oh, right here, yeah, and this is the lot.
So that means your house goes right up to the corner of your lot line.
Yeah.
How is that possible?
We're talking thirty years ago.
Well, that was again, this could have, none of this was here, it only went right to there. This house, this was my mother-in-law's addition, and that's why it goes over, because we did not go forward with that.
Yeah, but like, they wouldn't let you build that addition to that lot line.
But they did.
And either way...
Right, yeah.
So we do have the driveway. Right here.
That's less than fifty feet anywhere, and that's what... It also still doesn't access that house, because that's a different lot line.
Right.
You'd have to break that up again.
This house is accessed through here.
But the assessors also have that as having an actual house.
Just a number, not necessarily a house.
Okay, just assigned it further.
Just a number, yes, sixty-two.
Okay.
Pond Street.
How long, where did you cut this lot?
Six...
Seventeen years ago.
Okay.
At least.
Yeah, it's 2003, it was filmed in...
Yeah, it was like 2001.
I see, you just get rid of this lot line. You get rid of that lot line and just put it back into one lot, you got your, you got your access. But then you can't build a lot up front, which is the whole thing, is...
Well, if they, if they provided that they have...
Access?
Access right here for a retreat lot, then it's not next to another lot.
Cut it there.
No, they can't cut it there, they have to cut it back here, because they don't have enough room.
Gotcha.
So as long as this was fifty feet wide?
Yeah.
We'd be okay.
But you'd have to go there.
It's not accessible, technically, the number's there, but it's not accessible.
Yeah, you'd actually have to build the driveway in here, and like you're saying, that was cost prohibitive before. But technically, that's the only way I could see it, like, I'm trying to reconfigure, but although you could do that, if you moved this line, combined these two lots, and moved this proposed line to back here, you'd have everything, except you'd have to physically build that driveway.
Which they may not be able to do, because they'd have to cross the wetlands.
Yeah, we could do it before, but we had to build up the ridge for the Salamanders.
I don't know if conservation wouldn't let, I mean, they might let you replicate if you needed to, especially with an existing building. I would expect them to allow you to replicate, so whatever your crossing was, you told it square footage, they might allow you to actually create more of a wetlands here, because you'd still be far enough back from the house, and then you'd actually have to make more wetlands, you'd have to dig it down, and then it would be a, you know, square footage per square footage.
It's usually a two-to-one.
That's what they do, I agree, but that's just, that's how you get around those things when you, when you have to go through the wetlands, a lot of times, they'll just, they wanna see that that same amount of wetlands still exists, and they let you replicate. I agree, it sounds crazy when you put that...
I mean, things have changed over the last thirty-five years out there, too, so it may not be as much as it used to be.
I would say you wouldn't be that bad off if you were able to squeeze in a fifty-foot wide continuous access here, chopping off a chunk of that.
But you can't...
They don't wanna take it from the pond, that's fine.
Yeah, but you can't create the two next to each other.
Yeah. You could create two fifty-foot wide retreat accesses, can't you?
No.
Not side by side.
Even if they're separately owned?
Yeah.
Nope, you can have a lot in between, but you can't do two side by side, so you can't take a hundred feet and get two retreat lots.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
You need to read up on the bylaws.
It's long, very small numbers and letters.
Okay, so this, well, this is, it's...
It's an expensive mass.
Usually, Form A is a straight forward, and this one's got some stuff going on. The only thing, other thing I was wondering, you can't get around, so this is, this is all wet in through here?
No.
No, no, this is actually a high...
Is there any way, do you know if, say if you changed, if you moved parcel A to this side, there's no house or anything here, right? Do you know if there's any chance that, I know it's longer, but is there any chance that you could access that way? I know it's a lot of driveway.
That's a lot of driveway.
I'm just trying to come up with, I'm just trying to come up with options for you.
And I think it's, I think it's wet.
Okay.
If you've got my Pond Street, it does, it gets more, this is, there's another Pond over this one.
All right, I'm just trying to think of...
Yeah, I know.
I think how that is, I think somebody's bringing this up before, right? If you have that fifty-foot wide access that wraps around like that...
You won't have enough.
You'd lose your square footage.
I think you would be just as served trying to chop a parcel, leave this lot as it is, and try to chop another parcel out of the front, instead of buying parcel that...
So how far down Pond Street are we?
Um...
Three houses?
There's the Bin's house, do you know where the Bin's is? Then there's the Field, and then there's us.
You are on the side with the Bin's.
Yeah. Just after the Pond's Field there.
Okay, now, this one rings a bell now.
Which one of these is it?
So this, that's pretty wet there.
Well, we're here as well.
This is on street? I was thinking you'd get around the other side of this.
Are you that far down?
Yeah.
So up in the back, it's, you've got some high line.
It's dry here, this permed.
So what if, what if they just sold it, their existing right of way goes with what they're selling as long as they don't chop it, right?
No, because their frontage is there.
But their existing, this driveway would stand.
Yeah, but they'd still have no frontage, we can't just give them a lot...
With this lot, but if, because they're already looking to try to buy this gigantic parcel here.
No, no, their idea is to build here.
I know they're looking to build, but they're also looking to buy a section to make it work.
Only to, yeah, only to get their frontage.
But if they can get a better section...
Gets wetter.
It gets wetter.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if they bought a strip on that side.
How far back does the frontage have to go?
I think it's seventy-five feet before it can tow in.
Seventy-five feet, so this would have to come back seventy-five feet this way, and then could some, could this be the frontage?
Before you got tighter than a hundred and fifty feet.
Tight, to tie this, what I mean is, if we came back, yeah, that far, to give this the frontage for this lot, and then this is the frontage for the other lot.
We got a shape factor that's gotta go into it, everything, it's, it's not just as simple as rounded around there.
Yeah, so, see where they got the, the area to property ratio? So it makes it so, we try to eliminate having people with tiny strips that wiggle around and go out in there. So obviously, that one's acceptable, but...
They're just making it now?
Yeah, they got thirty-eight.
So it's basically a no-go?
As it sits right now, I don't think that we can approve that.
Okay.
I'll go back, I'll go back to Webby.
No, it isn't worth it, we've sunk already twelve grand in this. It's not worth it.
All the plans?
Yeah.
We had to park it and all that crap.
Yeah, the park, the easements and.
Yeah.
The piece of land.
I really feel like you might be putting a swing, so if you, if you do your retreat lot access over here, you're separated from that one, like one enough fifty-foot swath, kinda cutting the angle like that, and then this guy ends up just being triangular.
I don't know.
I don't, I don't think you'd have enough square footage, because even if you took this piece like this, you'd take this off, take that off, and you'd take this off?
You'd have to cut a portion of this, but you'd add a triangle there, but, because you need the full fifty anyway, to the back, and there's only twenty-five, so you at least have to take twenty-five from this guy.
It's a shame that you have a perfectly good driveway that you'd have essentially be giving up on, so that you can make another one to work in your frontage. But that's, that's on the bylaws.
Or you could always just build a right-of-way. Have somebody price that out, see if that's worthwhile, and if that's something, take a look at it. And that's the one over here?
Yeah.
But you can't do, oh.
You can't have them together though.
If you build an actual right-of-way, you could have it right up against the property, and then you'd have all the frontage, you'd need one of them to be an issue.
Well, how do you do that?
Uh, you'd have to build a subdivision road.
Yeah.
With the curves and super.
Not worth it.
Yeah.
I would say the thing to do is to see if, what that looks like to, to put a driveway in there.
Even gravel, are you looking to sell that property?
Yeah.
We're selling it.
Essentially, yeah. I'm just, just trying to get an idea, because.
Because right now, it's essentially it's two homes together, and it's just the three of us.
It's too big.
So we have essentially a whole house that we're not utilizing, and it's just cost-effective, it's crazy.
I mean, even a gravel driveway, you don't have to pave it.
Yeah, that, that would help, if you could find, especially if this guy's willing to work with you, which I assume he is, if you could find a way to get your access from anywhere here.
It's getting wetter as you build this one.
Right.
There's a big field here, you know, when you come down Pond Street?
I'm not familiar, I'm, but I mean, if you guys are saying there's no way to access any, you know, from back there.
I mean, what, like, what constitutes like a point where you say it's accessible, a driveway or, or use a minimum, whatever you wanna call that? What are the minimums, what are the maximums?
So, so our thing is, is just physically, when you drive, when you get home at night, you have to be able to drive to your house through your frontage. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be to a certain, like, doesn't have to be fancy, but that's how you, that's how you.
We would really have to fill this and make a driveway.
The idea was, you know, emergency vehicles need, need to come there to.
So you have to, that's what's going on here, is that to do this whole thing, you have to be able to make this a real driveway.
Yeah.
And then it would work.
Yep.
That'd be one heck of a.
And again, it's.
And it would be one hell of a driveway.
I was just looking at the field, if they ever, do they use the field?
We've done for thirty-five years.
No.
Because they have a, they have a road on the field.
Can they still use the easement?
And.
The way it's set up right now?
I mean, that'd still be really long.
So yeah, you've got your house.
I mean, the driveway's gotta be accessible.
And it's fine the way it is right now, you just can't make it worse.
Well.
No, but that's.
They have a perfectly good one here, shared, but if they build another one in here, does that mean that they're giving up that?
Environmentally, yeah, everything.
Well, I mean, you can have two.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, if you get a dirt path through the woods that goes here to the front of your.
It's gonna be more than the path.
Well, no, but you know what, I bet you can drive a car down.
Get a fire truck down.
Fire truck, ambulance.
They're all gonna go to the paved one on the other side.
That's correct. Which they've come down multiple times already for her mom.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to just cost it out, see how much, uh, see if you can get something down there.
Just, just to see where.
It's better than losing twelve grand.
That would be right here, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Access over to here.
Yeah, you, you gotta.
You would need a little bit more, right, because you need the full fifty feet, and now you're at forty.
No, 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 they have their frontage right here, so you would keep your existing. Anywhere in this section, if you can make a driveway.
Right, because this is the new frontage for this lot.
From through this frontage, and, and even if it meanders a little bit and gets to your house.
Because the other fact.
That's your, you've created your driveway.
And it's only a little bit longer too.
Because if they tried to make it in the state lot.
It looks deceiving, but it.
Yeah.
Then the setbacks change too.
Right.
So the property lines there, what, what are the setbacks, do you know that, off the top of your head?
Eighty feet.
Oh, really?
Eighty.
Setbacks for, um, retreat lots, seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
On all sides.
And the house is closer than that to this lot line.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's thirty-two.
All right. So unless we wanna fill this all in, basically worthless.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta, you gotta prove that you can, that you have a driveway through this lot to your house.
In order to keep that conforming.
In order to conform to the, the bylaws.
But you also don't have to fill in the old driveway either.
Yeah, it's not like you're gonna tear it.
They can still kind of access that house.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they would, that's what would be useful.
You'd es- you'd essentially be creating a loop.
Right.
Because the, the frontage of the lot should be measured.
See, Joe Wethy said that's why if we did the, um, easement, that that would be it, would take care of that. That's why he had us do that.
Yeah.
Well, that's already there, right?
We, we had it done.
Yeah. Recently?
Yeah. He told us to get that done, and that would take care of that.
So it was just informal before, you guys were just at a handshake agreement or whatever it was? Yeah, I mean, we've been, I don't know.
Yeah, we never knew we needed it. We never knew we needed this.
We're just good friends, and we just use it.
So they never had, they never had any?
Nobody's ever had a problem, no.
No, we never had one.
So they've been basically doing a common driveway all this time without.
Without any.
Without anything, probably, without even us knowing it, because they, when they did this retreat lot, they probably showed the frontage. But the common driveway.
Is up to them.
So, so do you know, like, this side, this plan?
And they have their retreat lot.
That plan is thirty years old.
Which one?
This plan?
This one.
No, he just did this plan.
No, the whole thing, that's all, whole subdivision.
My, we moved into my house in one bedroom.
Nineteen eighty-six, we moved in, and then John and Tyne, you built the.
Ten years later?
Yeah, probably roughly.
But when, that's what we're saying, when she went in, it was a retreat lot again, which probably never should have happened, but it did.
No, it probably had, it has the fifty feet from the lot.
Yeah, they have the fifty feet, they just don't have to take it back.
But the driveway, they probably started just using your.
Yeah.
Existing driveway, but at the same time, your existing driveway cut into their property, and then back over into your property.
Was he the building inspector in Whitman?
My brother is.
Yeah, Bobby.
Bobby coming?
Yeah, because I, I was on the board when the, when these plans came in before, and I haven't been on thirty years.
For which one, the?
Close, but.
The adjacent property?
Yeah, probably, probably for this lot, the retreat.
There was a huge parcel here that they cut into three lots, where the Tereshkos and, um, Bonkurski.
Yeah. Yeah, Bobby was probably in when we were doing the, uh, the addition.
We moved into the house in nineteen eighty-six.
But I remember the plan coming in, and they wanted to divide more, because the other, the other house over here, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, the, uh.
Bonkurskis.
Yeah, they, he died, and then, was it the grandson got the house?
Son, his son.
Son.
Yeah, Steve Tereshko.
All righty.
So, when, when the plan got signed, it, it met the.
That, then that is driveway would actually cross three.
It's just that the, the driveway was supposed to be one separately.
Yeah, there should have been two driveways next to each other, going all the way back, from when they built their house.
Uh-huh.
They should have had.
They should have had their own driveway. They should have created their own driveway.
We're around right now, wouldn't right?
No, it wouldn't, and we're just trying to figure out how we got to the point where this is.
Well, that happened, right?
Yeah.
Well, I know, yeah. Steve, Steve is the most frugal man on planet.
Oh, yeah.
He didn't wanna, he didn't wanna, oh, I saved you money.
Yeah.
That was Steve.
Oh, well, so.
Save, save himself some, so.
Yeah. All right, so the only way we could do it would be to fill this whole thing in.
Well, just price it out, see how much, see, see what the cost of just putting a, a.
Well, I think he, at, back at that time, I think that was looked at as far as putting a driveway in there, and that just didn't happen, right?
Right, because I've walked in.
Yeah, that's, that's when this addition stopped, because originally, her house was gonna be over here.
Right.
It's gonna be a whole separate house over here.
Right.
And it's just, when the driveway issue started to come up.
Yeah, the issue, the cost of a driveway out there was way too much.
It was like getting up to a hundred thousand dollars just for a driveway.
So she's like, can we borrow your driveway?
Yeah, no, that's, I'm talking about my mother's lot.
No, 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 it's the other lot, yeah.
But even, yeah, Tanya basically should have created her own driveway on that retreat lot.
I should go and tell John, he's gotta put his driveway in.
No.
We've got an easement now, what I'm saying is, they should have, had their own driveway.
Did he subdivide the, the lot next door to you too, of, of the next one over?
Yeah, Bonkurski is over.
They had, yeah, they created three lots.
The old house, right?
Greg wanted it.
Greg has the old house.
But, but he put his garage too close to the, to the lot line.
Actually, Steve's, Steve's plan created a lot line.
Correct.
So he had, so only one, just chop it down.
Yeah.
Right.
Because then they own.
I'm just trying to place the things, but that was the next one.
That's the one next one over, that's correct, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I'll take these back.
Yep, then I won't charge you.
Thanks. Let's talk to Joe Wethy again.
Good, good luck.
Yeah.
I hope you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Have a good night.
Okay, you too.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Night. Do we have a seven fifteen appointment?
Um, well, we have a Form A, but he's not here. Um, I don't know if you remember a couple of years ago too. Greg wanted to cut this retreat off.
Right, and he had an addition that was too close.
Right, and he went to zoning to get a variance for it, and then we said, uh, no, and we took zoning to.
Yeah.
Court, and they backed down.
Yeah, that's.
Because it was gonna create a, a non-conforming law from a conforming law.
Right.
So.
One.
There he is. Hi, Joe.
Is this it?
Yes, it is.
Hope this one's easy.
If you're gravel driving.
Uh, yeah.
You want us to tell us what, what we're looking at, what you're looking to do?
Yeah, so, um, I guess the way that this was set up is, this was one, we are, we need two, and we have someone that wants to buy the, the two of them. So we just have to buy it to just have the pieces.
Here's the other one, just for reference.
What's the existing conditions?
This is.
Let's put this address on my ass.
This address.
This is three.
Three thirty?
Three fourteen.
All right, what I'm doing.
Yeah, yeah, it is, but that's my.
What's with parcel B? Which one parcel A is?
Yeah, that's.
That's this piece.
No, no, right here.
Do you know why that wasn't included in the?
Um, I think they have an idea, um, the, the people that own this plaza over here. I think at some point, they might wanna get this, if they were forced to redo this subject, because it wasn't, wasn't necessary for these two pieces, so we just.
Okay, just covering it up there?
Yeah. Um, they, we didn't need it for what we were trying to do in the back, so.
This is Mount Pontus Street?
It's very across from Stop Shop.
Yeah, this is the.
The condos, I think.
It's where they wanted to do the, the multi.
We had, we had Mount Pontus Street on here, that's why it was.
Did we? Oh, I'm sorry.
Really?
My bad.
This is an A and R plan?
Sure.
So.
Yeah. Uh, one, one fifty, not one twenty, correct?
What was it?
No, one twenty.
This parcel just, when you create and doesn't have the frontage, which is.
Uh, it actually does now. It, it does now.
Well, that's not one fifty, that's only one hundred and eleven.
Well, I think that's why they're identifying that as the.
It's, um, fifty and sixty.
Well, I don't need to have the frontage, uh, this one.
Has one ten. That's what, that's what you need for a subdivision.
Okay.
It's fifty plus thirty and thirty.
It's two hundreds short.
Of.
Quarter an inch short.
Of one ten?
Yeah.
You guys know all that stuff more than I do, so.
Gonna go out another decimal point.
You just cut one back, be all set.
Yeah.
Now, this piece is not, is not going the way that, you know, the driveway for the condo project, which, you know, I'm sure at some point, the company is gonna sell that to someone, and so. They, they, both of those lots would have access to the traffic light as well.
There's no wetlands on either one of these two?
No, no, those are very dry. This is where the fops in, is this, those?
Yeah.
Those are really, the wetlands are stored by the, the wetlands is back here, on the bank.
Closed bins.
Yeah.
Yeah, over here.
Yeah.
Do you know if cutting that frontage short, does that, um, deadend you from anything in the future?
Uh, I don't.
It might be worth looking into, because you have, it looks like you have enough frontage.
Well, what is to say in the frontage is hits?
Giving you.
It's one oh nine point nine eight.
If you know what I mean, ju- just to kinda protect yourself in the future.
Is this, is this one saying one's?
Hundred and forty-three feet.
One sixty-six?
Yeah. You have plenty, you can just.
I'd almost, yeah, like, not that there's anything wrong with that, but you might wanna take a little bit more just to secure your future of that lot. You know what I mean?
This is actually the first time I've looked at these plans myself, so I'm actually a little confused about the size of this here. I mean, when we came in before, for this back piece, I was one forty-three, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we worked a deal with these people, had to get another seven feet, so, to be honest, I don't know why it's not saying one fifty, and that's what I'm looking at, and I'm wondering.
It wouldn't be one fifty, it would be one ten.
But, but I, I would make sure, I'd make sure that you keep that one ten for that parcel A, I think it's worth it for you.
Pulling seven from here. Yeah, weren't, weren't, you're gonna need a variance on one of those frontages on the commercial properties?
That was just, this one here, that was at one forty-three point seven or something like that.
And what's at that now?
One oh nine, 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 nine. And you said you need one ten, cause it's a fifty-foot right away with the.
One ten if you're gonna do a street.
Yeah.
I wish I had the answer, and I don't wanna say approve it like this, if I don't think it's.
Cause I don't think there's anything wrong with it, there's nothing that would stop us, I don't think.
Well, I know.
From approving it, buddy, just protect your interest.
Right, because the last I asked, I was asking if we had a hundred and fifty feet here, and I was told that we did.
Yeah.
And we've got the answer back how many times, I'm sorry. I guess maybe one more, I think I'll.
Oh, that's right, cause if you're doing the counter development, you're not a right away, you need a frontage there, so you wanna have that, you know?
I'd look into that.
What's, so if I, if I have to draw this and come back, when is that gonna be, end of the month?
Um, we're every two weeks.
Not until July?
No, yeah, it would be July six. July, which I can't believe it's already almost July.
I know. Yeah, the sixth.
So three weeks?
School's over in two days.
You know what, I, I'm sorry, I didn't look at these, I was just going over them, I didn't know I was supposed to come tonight.
Unless that is the intention to just have the one ten for entranceway.
So it's under one ten?
It's under one ten also.
Protect your interest, check it out.
And then you'd have to.
Because if you guys, you know, for this tonight, and it's wrong, we have to come back and redo it again, right?
Right.
Well, I guess that's why we bring these things, so the experts can look at it and tell me what people I paid to.
Yeah.
We can only take it from here as opposed to this one.
Yeah.
This one's got one sixty-six, that's one sixty-six.
Right, well, we don't own this one anymore.
Right.
We sold that one to Cumberland Farms, so they could stop stopping John from putting gas.
Gas station in.
Cause we know there's some competition, we could get a little cheaper gas around here.
It would be nice.
Couldn't they just do that on the parcel that we're looking to do that Dunkin' Donuts thing on?
They're gonna be doing that.
That's, that's the Dunkin's.
Is that moving forward, nothing's happening?
Oh, yeah, they're, they're.
Oh, yeah?
Doing stuff in there.
Actually, I think, were we gonna look at those tonight?
I am looking at them.
So can I get on the agenda for the next meeting?
Certainly.
This is, sorry, if I had known I was coming here to do this and dropping them off, I would have, I would have looked more and not wasted your time.
That's all right, at least we caught it before, you know, so it's not an issue later on.
What is the date?
July sixth.
Yes. Seven o'clock? No, are we gonna be meeting at six thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do six forty-five? Just to be on the safe side?
All right, well, I'll take these back to where they came from and ask the questions, so thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, worst case scenario, you bring this exact thing back.
Yeah, it just doesn't, as you're pointing out, it doesn't look correct to me, especially with the question I was asking earlier, I'm matching up the answers.
Do you wanna take these back?
Yeah.
I got them all folded up pretty for you.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm gonna go in the pile of front old papers in my pile.
You know what I'm gonna do though, I'm gonna keep one.
Okay.
Just as, um, for files.
So that we know that you were here.
That we know.
So when you're saying the one ten, what is that for?
If you're gonna do a roadway?
Yeah, but if you want the frontage, you want a hundred and fifty feet.
Right, right, okay, thank you, I'll see you guys on the sixth.
How much was all those other two?
One sixty-six.
Yeah, one sixty-six and one sixty-four.
You get thirty back.
They're both one sixty-six.
Were they both one sixty-six?
Forty-three maybe.
Yeah, yeah, one foot, cause that's where he was at before.
But then they said he got an extra seven feet from the neighbor, so he'd be able to line up three point fifties in our. But that's not adding up, so that plan doesn't appear to show that.
He gets, yeah, so he can, he can pull thirty, yeah, thirty feet. He said he, when he came in before, he had a hundred and forty-three feet.
That's right though, right, there was one that was short.
And, and he was, um.
Seven feet short.
He went, and he was seven feet short, and he went back, and was get, he just said it, was trying to get seven feet from the neighbor.
Did get seven feet from the neighbor, sometimes.
Right, yeah, it's, well, it sounds like he had it lined up. And then it wasn't represented. Yeah.
Could you give that section of the, the zoning that says you have a driveway actually pass over the frontage that you need? I should probably put it in my book.
Yeah. Mine is for.
You, you can do that one.
No, I'm not reading up that massive toner though.
No way. This is, uh, building apartment.
Not bad for the printing.
Donkeys.
So what did they end up doing here with the frontage, what's the final layout?
Dunkins?
Yeah, we agreed that he should want them to do a little bit more of a green area along with that.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't frontage, that was just them being a little more.
The landscape strip along the front.
Yeah. There, a lot of those trees are a lot better off than I thought they were, actually. When they were in here before, I was thinking that a lot of those were just dead, standing dead.
I think they're on their way out.
There are a lot of them that are on their way out, but this is good enough, but those are hysterical.
Hysterical, historical. That's gonna be on the minutes you do it, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Did you, did you not hear what I read the minutes that I said before?
It's one sixty-seven, ten, L.
You know how common driveways are otherwise allowed in the back there?
I'm still not seeing our strip of green.
We do have the trail from the top.
Yeah. Don't act like I have a whole box of them.
We don't have updated site plans, so, huh?
They're just, they're just providing mostly, uh, building plans, yeah.
I think you're responsible for landscaping up.
Yeah, me too. That's what I'm digging for here.
I don't see it on the title page.
Yeah, it's not.
All, all building up, yeah.
Yeah, it's all building.
Does somebody check that the plans that they submit for building?
There is a, there is a.
Align with the.
Shot with some of the, uh, parking on it, but it's not.
Building inspector checked the proposed plans to make sure they conform with what is approved?
Well, the proposed was just a.
There it is.
No, I get that, but should they submit a construction drawing with a site plan, so that somebody can check that they're gonna build what they got approved?
Doesn't have a greenery on there.
Sometimes.
Well, that's why you're guys looking at it.
Well, we don't have a site plan.
Yeah, we don't have a site plan.
Do you want me to find it?
Yeah, sure.
The original, the original approved site plan?
I want the one they're actually gonna build.
Right.
Look at that, just happened to happen.
You're just gonna make us ask for it, huh? You're just gonna make us ask for it?
Yeah. Cause we were just approving where the building was gonna go, not necessarily.
All right, this is my name on it, it's got Carlos Sloop on it.
So this is what we approved, not what they're gonna build.
Not the built.
That's what you approved as far as the site plan goes.
Yeah.
Well, Gordon requested some greenage.
Yeah, we asked for some more frontage, cause they were building their curbs right up to the property line.
Yeah.
And they said they were gonna give an extra three to five feet or whatever.
But they were trying to get it, I don't know if they were.
They were gonna give more, and I think there was a minimum number that was identified, and they said they were gonna try and do more, but.
Yeah, cause it's not, if you actually look at this, not that one, it's looking like they're going right to the, right to the curb here too. Exactly what's represented on this.
So it'd be nice if they had some sort of site plan that came along with the construction documents, so we could all check all that.
Do you want this back, anybody wanna look at this?
I don't see any hysterical trees in there.
No. They're removing them all.
You'll laugh in tree.
Even, even my neighbor wants to.
Where they cut down trees?
Right across the front.
Do we have a historical, like a tree warding?
They had the tree warding.
Yeah.
But the town was those trees.
They spoke of the Lorax.
It's the tree warding now, I do know, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, those, those are actually, uh, historical trees, a lot of that whole strip.
Yeah.
Couple of them. Rough.
So what do you want me to do?
I don't know, I was just providing information when someone was asking.
Ask the applicant for a site plan? Or if they intend on providing one?
Yeah, if they.
But didn't they already give us one and we signed it?
Yeah.
But they did, but, but just wanna know that they're gonna build what they agreed to. I guess, right? Do we have? But you do understand that even if they give us a copy of the plan, like, that doesn't mean that's what they're gonna build, they're gonna give us a copy of what we signed.
Right. Gordon didn't request more greenage, greenage, green area in the front, he wanted it to not look like.
Like, I guess ask, don't demand the plan, just ask if they have one.
The, uh, the building actually looks pretty nice, by the, by the plan.
Site plan that you guys did.
But these are new, obviously.
Well, that's the construction plan.
Right, and a lot of times you include construction, site plans, and landscaping, and other stuff, I understand if you're doing it on the cheap, you wouldn't necessarily do it, but.
Okay, so you wanna see if, uh.
They intend on providing one, just ask the question and see what they say.
Okay.
Some landscaping.
Do we have a copy of the minutes on, or the approval on what we actually asked for there, in terms of the additional landscaping there?
Yeah, what day was this?
Uh, it was sixth, ten, six.
An answer to you on the estate lots?
Yep.
The access to said estate lot shall be a minimum of fifty feet in width.
Yes.
No more than one dwelling shall exist on the estate lot. No more than one lot shall be served by an accessway. And no accessway shall but another estate lot accessway.
Okay. Could you create a two-foot wide, non-buildable pars- parcel between the two to get around that?
By definition, I'd have to say yes.
Putting that out there, not suggesting that we should do it. Oh, you think because we said potential green space?
Yeah, that's.
I thought it was kinda left as, they were gonna try to provide as much as they could, not that we gave, I don't think we gave a hard number, and I don't think there was an agreement on, on, I think it was. Left at to do their best and provide as much as possible.
You could read this condition.
I thought the way it was left, that they were gonna come back and show us what they could.
That's right, that's what I remember too, really come back, but we didn't make them, yeah.
Yeah, and it says, potential green space approximately three to five feet to be provided between the entrance and exit. So you could say that space that should be three to five feet wide could be green, or it could be something else, could be potentially green.
But most of that area is basically where the Stop and Shop sign is right now, that's all green.
No, along the frontage, so the Stop and Shop's the other side.
But where there's entrance and exit is, is Stop and Shops driveway.
I said two.
And then the frontage, which is gonna be right almost at the sign.
But I think the majority of the flow, traffic flow is gonna be one oh six, it's gonna be like a supplemental accessway.
Yeah, so I'd be curious on what they intend on doing there.
I don't wanna cover up our, uh, but this is one oh six here.
Right, yeah.
With your entry.
Oh, yeah, two, two, okay, yeah.
And exit here. And then this is, this is where the Stop and Shop sign was gonna be.
That's where it is on the drive through.
Cause this is the connection to the Stop and Shop, yeah.
Oh, yeah, someone smashed that sign.
A whole lot of smash that thing.
They only smashed the corner.
Yeah, then they took it down, yeah. Yeah, what, what you see now is not what happened, it was, the sign was still there, they just knocked the bricks off the corner and destroyed the sign.
Yeah, when I saw it, I'm like, whoa, what do we like that?
I forgot that there was two entrances on.
Are we gonna hire Silver or one of those guys to look at this thing while it's being constructed, or is this not one of those type of projects, does that only happen on subdivisions?
On the Dunkin' Donuts, I don't think we, uh, did we put that in that we were gonna do that?
We normally have to, or is there budget for only on subdivisions, the way it's set up typically?
I believe it's supposed to be sent in, like, a engineer review money, so our review engine will be looking at, or is that just subdivisions?
Subdivisions. We've done it, like, when Walmart came in, when Stop and Shop came in, we did those bigger projects.
And it gets taken out of the building permit fee, or where does that money come from?
No, it comes from them. They have, they have to fund, uh, Walmart account, yeah.
Okay. Probably not that complicated, but yeah, this, this one seems simple.
Yeah.
So you want me to give them a call, see if they wanna, would come back in in July?
And give us an update? Site plan?
Yeah. Or do they have to come in if they just wanna give us a plan, or, yeah?
I don't care, they send us in with their proposal.
If they don't, yeah, if they don't wanna pay somebody to put the plan together, they come in, talk about it?
In reference to the green space on one oh six.
And the hysterical trees.
Those trees are going down, I don't know, they're gonna get cut down.
Don't put down the trees, that's ridiculous. Mrs. Saroko says hysterical trees.
Mr. Beltray says hysterical trees once, Mr. Saroko says like an additional seven times.
Sorry, you got that? Several times?
No, I'm just gonna put a note here that we should probably, or they should actually probably go before the historical commission to make sure.
Historical district is like here. I don't even think they're in it, have they? I don't think so, I think it's like, folks' tower and. I think it runs out on the other side of the street at the country hall.
And does it even matter if they're not demolishing anything?
Yeah, no, they got, they said they had to go and get approval to take the trees done.
Well, that's different, right?
Yeah, okay. Hysterical.
Gordon says they want to make it. She should just have a tag.
Hysterical zone in.
So that's one, that is Stop and Shop, so. That's three fifty-five there.
Yeah.
What is it?
That's the line question.
So it's not in the historical district, so that's probably the historical district over here, right?
At dark dash.
Go to page seventy-three, let's see.
Will it label it?
This is business, right?
Yeah.
Commercial, commercial business residential.
So that's probably commercial business residential as well.
Um, this is not in here.
Cause this is the Alders here, that's the bank, and this is.
The lot he's dividing.
The lot that he wanted to.
What's the next one down below, seventy-three? Yeah. Yeah, residential, commercial. But I think the historical comes up in there too, maybe you don't have it on that. Right, so this must be the Cowish? No, that's, uh.
Oh, this way? This country. Yeah, we're way up there.
Okay, we're, we're up. No, no, you're right, it is. That is Putt's Way that comes out beside that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's just not in, used really. So it doesn't show the.
Hysterical zone.
Hysterical zone.
Do you want to see if I can finalize one of them?
Even if it were in the hysterical zone, what would you have to do? Does it, does it matter, isn't that more about demolition delay and maintaining existing homes than rebuilding new stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if they were in there, they'd have to go before them, propose what they're doing.
I still think.
They would have been handled that already.
You have to talk to the tree ward and know if.
Yeah, but the, the trees are separate. That's because if it's a town.
I think it's the first, isn't it the first point of feet from the yellow line?
No, it depends on what the layout is.
All right, here's the town hall.
There it is, right there, no.
So it's not in the historical district, so we don't have to worry about that. That's all on that slide there.
That goes right up to the country hall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's not on my side of the street either.
Right, so we're good there.
Let me see.
Yeah, those two wash right there, yeah.
There's your friend.
Yeah. I'm gonna get him along just fine.
That's good.
That's Monday?
Mm-hmm.
I thought I was, but I'm not, I'm just.
This is lying, this is the old, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Black Spruce Shop.
Yep.
They had to include that.
Yeah. Well, didn't they tear it out and remove it and put it over here?
That was John's shit. Yeah, there's nothing like they wouldn't let the guy put a bathroom in, cause it was old, it was like the guy worked out of there, let the guy have a bathroom.
Oh, right here in the middle there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The old.
So they built on historical side on Carver and South, that corner lot?
Here?
No, no, on the other end, where they just built that brand-new, um.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can build there.
You can build in the historical zone. You can build in the historical though.
This has to be approved.
So that was owned by the church, the church.
Yeah, the, the old lady that lived.
And that wasn't an acre lot though either.
Only has to be forty thousand?
The woman that lived in this old cape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She owned the whole thing. She gave it to the church as long as she can be buried out of the church.
And now it's a house.
Now it's a house.
I saw somebody walking around on this property the other day. Is this person selling theirs? Looked like there was a realtor out there.
Uh.
Isn't, isn't that the oil company?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
The oil company, the curtains is actually the, this year, and then, yeah, they, they do own it though.
Yeah, I was gonna say the signs out in front of that building.
Yeah.
Wow.
Jesus, look at this, huh? I was wondering how they squeezed all that.
What's that?
This lot.
Oh, where the barn was.
Yeah. That's, that's not the barn though, so this must not have that new cut, cause the barn's here, isn't it?
I think the barn is on that people.
The barn, the new house, and then there's the existings back here.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, this is two thousand one, so, yeah.
Okay, well, I just. Just looking. And somebody bought that lot right there.
One beside you?
Yeah. Was it you? No.
You're good?
My grandparents lived here for fifty years. The year I moved in, I break ground in the lot next door.
Well, they were waiting for your grandparents to bring some to young them.
Yeah. I almost brought a couple of, there's yellow spotted salmon, I just wanna work.
Then the turtles.
No, what, what was it? There were birds too, we had some birds that were, uh, used for a while.
Turtle guys, they got little studies, GPS trackers.
Nice.
So you guys deal with this, right?
Well, we wondered if we could see some more plans.
Yeah, any, any one will do.
Yeah, just go, um.
Ways and plans.
Just go, just go pull out a multifamily, any multifamily, we'll take a look at that.
You're gonna make a motion to wanna take some.
We're gonna do a motion for minutes?
Make a motion for the minutes?
Or did you wanna correct them on?
I don't know, you know what? I think this is a better, more, I think this is a better, more accurate way of displaying how I speak in these.
Corrections.
That way if you ever mess up, no one's gonna think anything, I was like, why is he always talking like that?
Just call him mushmole.
Duncan Donuts. Is everybody good with the Duncan Donut plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. What do we need to do with it?
Trying to build a permit?
Uh, would you? Saying that it conforms? Is that us that that's what we're doing, saying their plan conforms?
You reviewed the plans.
There's nothing to review.
Yeah, we reviewed. Like, I don't ever remember signing.
I know, but we're trying to get better at doing this.
But it's, my point is, we want them to come in so that we can confirm that it makes sense, right?
That it's still a one-story building.
And they're doing what they were supposed to be doing with the conditions. Is it a one-story building?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Why do I think he had offices upstairs?
Cause he wants the original.
Oh, the original one was, alright, alright. I was like, oh, wait a minute.
I think these minutes are beautiful.
These things from like five years ago keep coming up.
A motion to accept the minutes?
A motion to accept made teens, for the, for the minutes.
I have a motion for a second?
A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
You have an official copy somewhere?
I don't know, you guys, that one's it.
This is it?
Sure. I need a new stamp, can I buy a stamp?
Yeah?
You, you can print that out on your new printer. Like, you can probably make it red.
Come on, let's put it up, talk.
I was just gonna ask, don't we have stamps for our names?
No, no, stamps are separate.
We do have stamps for our names.
I know we have stamps for our names.
We do.
I was, I was told when I came in that it makes, it'd make things so much easier.
She runs them out to our wives.
Yeah.
Wait, does this printer too? Did you get a bi- log printing too?
No.
I think it does.
We can't put electronic signatures though.
I think it does a virtual print.
Virtual?
Is it one of those like stand next to it, printing? Mega?
It's, it's, uh.
Prints files collates?
It's a plastic printer, you can print any parts or anything with it.
Oh, it's a three D printer?
Three D, yeah.
There we go.
Minutes again?
Okay, bills?
Make a motion. Make a motion to pay a bill to Merrill Associates, invoice number three eight five four for autumn lane inspection. Construction costs report to planning. The amount of one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, interest incurred. Sixteen dollars and eighty cents for a total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty cents.
A motion for a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous?
Would like to make a motion, make a motion to accept, uh, to pay a bill for the Lexmark X seven four six D E and toner to C D W government. Seven five remnants drive from Chicago, Illinois. For a total of nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, invoice number H X V five four eight seven.
Hey, I have a motion to pay the bills for a second?
I'll second that one too.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimous?
It's a heck of a printer.
That's ridiculous. How much printing we do?
As, as long as you, as long as you think it's worth it.
Yeah, I do, I see it every week.
Buy a thousand dollar printer, but has to buy her own water.
Yeah, really.
Right?
We have one more bill to do.
I think so.
Make a motion to pay a bill to Silva Engineering Associates, invoice number one eight seven eight six for inspection and report of Joe's Rain Estates. In the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
A motion to pay the bills for a second?
Hundred and eighty-eight dollars to go up and look at that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gee, the other ones are a hundred bucks.
Carries unanimous? Do we get different colors?
Yeah, I didn't wanna go all Tillerish on it.
Pretty much a lot of trouble catching up to all those colors.
No red.
No, they did, some cyan. You know this is gonna be like at least a little.
Oh yeah, this is totally getting progressed.
Okay, we got one more thing to do.
Oh yeah, choosing.
Look at this.
Right? What's up?
Reorganized?
Oh, whoops.
So much for shape factor.
These lines.
Oh, the rattails?
Yeah. How did that happen?
That's why we've got shit.
That was beautiful.
It's nice. What were they trying to accomplish?
It's actually a subdivision in Plymouth that we did that looks the same, and the town actually allowed one driveway to go through, so it's a, it's a one thing, there's one access at the end of the cul-de-sac and it comes back. And it actually provides access for like seven or eight lots in the back.
That's a mess. Cause they have the acreage.
They didn't have a perk. That's what it was all about. That was for the perk test.
Oh.
Those lines, where to get the pipelines to, an area of perk.
Oh, so they have a central septic system for all those houses?
Well, it's the only place at perk.
But is it like a shared septic system or they have like five or six of them just laid out? Just in a row? Oh, so the septic is, but you've got setback from property lines and all that for the septic systems too.
Ten feet.
These are narrower than ten feet though, but ten feet.
You just had to get the pipe.
Wow. So they literally have all the, the, they have like seven or eight lines going back this way and the septic's back here?
Yeah, I have one already.
Are those connected to houses now? I don't think they ever went in.
Oh, no? Walnut?
Yeah, it's where.
Oh, yeah.
Casseroles and houses.
Yeah, cause that's, yeah, they got their big, big huge thing back there. So they never, yeah, you're right, there's nothing there. You got the ones up on the hill here, yeah, you got that one back there. Do you know what the deal is with this one that's at the corner of Highland Circle but still taken? Do you know why that one hasn't been developed yet?
Is that the drainage?
No, there's two little ponds on each side of the entrance drive, and there's that old, small, tiny house that's right there. And then you got a vacant lot just sitting there that's never been developed.
On one oh five?
Yeah, on the corner of Highland and one oh five.
Yeah, the, the guy that has the old house owns that.
He does?
Yeah. Doesn't want anything built.
Is there some, so he still lives there?
Yes.
Looks like nobody lives there.
I would like to nominate Gordon Andrews for chairman.
Nobody else wants it?
I think we all.
Either one of them brings the book. All those in favor?
Is there a motion as a second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want it?
I don't care. If they'll be able to want it. How about vice chair?
Mark, make a, make a motion to nominate Carlos as our vice chairman?
A, out of curiosity, what are the responsibilities of these various roles?
If he's not here, you run the meeting.
You're planning on beating him, right?
And the, uh, pay gets doubled.
Oh, perfect. I like it, twice the pens for everyone.
No, those get done.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Put that on my resume. Sure.
Okay.
I nominate Mark Nilius. For what?
Clerk.
Clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright, does that mean you should be the one taking the notes?
He gets triple, he, he gets triple pay.
Yeah, wow.
Right.
That means you move, you get to move over once, yeah?
Clerk.
Now they can see your face on video. I like to, instead of my bald spot, it's probably blinding the camera right now, you can't see what's going on here. Glasses. It's my third eye is in the back. I did.
Okay?
Aye.
Any other position?
I'll be the hysterical tree, I'll be.
I don't think we need a treasurer.
Well, we need somebody to watch the budget.
Yeah, watching it go.
Still got seven hundred.
It's alright if we turn back.
Doing better than the rest of the town.
You got seven hundred, I mean, that's a good barbecue. For the town. We'll make notice, planning board holds barbecue, no more coming.
Planning board, no.
Are there any other motions to bring before the board?
Did you wanna review, uh, multifamilies? Yeah, was there like a zoning review to talk about?
No, it's something we need to think about for the multifamily to, uh, no, it was the in-law thing that I wanted to start looking at.
In-law thing?
Yes, the in-law apartments?
I'm grand, I'm grandfathered.
I know you are.
No, that's your grandfather.
Oh. You have been grandfathered.
Yeah.
So what, what is in the, in question? I thought you were, I thought you were, uh, I thought you were bringing the, uh. What is the current rule, it's not allowed?
It's allowed by special permits.
It's allowed, but yeah.
There's been some talk about maybe making it allowable by right.
Right.
The state's been looking at that as well.
Which is what it should be.
Kinda have to change our stuff up as well.
Because tech, technically, I mean, you can't stop families from living together anyhow.
Mm-hmm. But that's just the, you could rent it out also, can't you? If you create an in-law?
You're not supposed to, that's why the requirement is that it does not become an income-producing apartment.
They'd still have to go in front of the zoning board if it's still by right, correct?
No.
No.
So then people are just gonna do it for free.
Well, you still have to get a permit.
Still have to get a permit, right.
Otherwise, when you sell your house, you'd have issues and, yeah. If we were looking at the multifamily zoning component, I'd like to get rid of some of those conflicts in the language that we were looking at last time. I forget exactly what it was, but.
Yeah, between the, the lot. See, I, I think it's strange how it mentions that it has to be on a lot. But if, if you look the, the way it is, is it, all it says is it has to have the, a lot. Uh, the part about the frontage is not in that part of the bylaw. And then when you look at our definition of lot, lot is a parcel of land that's shown on a plan, that's it. It doesn't say.
Or has to be recorded.
Uh, no, I, in a, um, in our definition of lot, it, it only says that it ha, it's a parcel of land shown on a plan.
Recorded.
And described. No, no, that's not what it says.
Yeah, and recorded.
Um, I mean, I wish I had my copy of it, but.
I just looked that up tonight and it says unrecorded.
And didn't it also say that?
Unless I have an outdated version, um.
Didn't it say that the lot had to have frontage?
No, see, the, what I'm saying is, is it, when you look up in, um, in what I have it.
In general, you have that.
There's a difference between the, the generic term lot and a buildable lot.
But I thought there was language in there that each lot should have the required frontage, but that was contradictory to what a whole condo development is on its own anyway.
But, but here's, here's a concept that you need to look at, is when it's talking about a multifamily, you need over ten acres to do it.
Yeah.
Lot, if you, you can't have more than one building on a lot. So if you're gonna do a multifamily, that means you need lots, which means that you have to go to subdivision control.
But that doesn't make any sense though, because.
Why doesn't it?
Because, well, the way it's written, it doesn't make any sense.
But why doesn't it make any sense if you have over ten acres and you subdivide that to do a multifamily?
You shouldn't have to subdivide it. You should have one large parcel that's more than ten acres and you should be able to do your condo development as a site plan review type of development, as long as you have your frontage for that ten-acre lot on a public right-of-way.
How much frontage do you need?
The one fifty, right? Or whatever.
For the whole thing?
Yeah, for all ten acres.
But when it says that you can't have more than one building on a lot.
Which is one of those conflicts that should be addressed.
Well, if you look at it from the point of view that if it's a multifamily and you have ten units in a building, then you can be on one lot.
Yeah.
If you wanna do separate buildings, they have to be on separate lots.
But each lot.
Which needs frontage.
But I think that's.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing that.
No, I understand it's, the way it's written, it's.
It might be, you might like to see it differently, but that's the way it's written and it does, doesn't really make sense.
It makes sense if you're not worrying about the practicality of it.
No, no, but it's, it can be done.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying it's not feasible, you can do anything. You'd have to have a lot more land, obviously, to do that, cause then you have to build a new right-of-way.
Not necessarily.
Well, yeah, if you, if, if your buildings are on a ten-acre lot and they're in the back of the lot, you're not gonna have any of your four buildings.
No, it says you need ten acres to do a multifamily.
Yes, so, but let's say you have four buildings and each, each one of those four buildings has to all of a sudden now have to have the hundred fifty feet of frontage?
Well, you can't have a common driveway in town.
Well, that's why it's not a common driveway, it's a driveway for this condo multifamily development. Private way in the bylaws.
But by our bylaw, we can't create by, a private way.
Are you making a driveway for the Duncan Donuts? That is a conflicting.
Our subdivision control law says we can't do private ways.
So we can't do private ways, but you have a bylaw that specifically references private ways. That's a conflict, right?
What's, what's it say about private ways?
It says, uh, it's, uh, references that you have to have your, uh, frontage on, uh, and, and references the private way. I don't know the exact language.
Private way could exist, that's why it's mentioned.
But you were just saying it couldn't exist.
No, it can exist, it can be in existence right. No, it can exist, it can be in existence right now. That's why it's mentioned.
It can be in existence, there just can't be any more of them?
No, it can be in exist, right, it can be in existence when the bylaw came in. Because not everything was an accepted street. So it could be a private way prior to the zoning bylaws in sixty-three.
I guess my point is on the multifamily development, they should be treated more like a commercial development as opposed to a single-family residential development.
I'm not arguing that.
So.
I'm not arguing that and I'm not saying that we should clarify.
In this case of the common driveway, would you turn down the Dunkin' Donuts site because they're using a shared driveway with Stop and Shop for that secondary access they have? Is that a common driveway? The way it's defined and the way you argued it before, it seems like it would be.
Does that mean that anybody that goes in a strip mall is using a common driveway?
The way you were just describing it.
Or is that one building?
Well, that's a strip mall, so that'd be one building, right?
I don't know.
A one building with shared straw fronts, what he just said, that's two completely different buildings, Stop and Shop and Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
Sharing a driveway.
Yeah, so I, I'd be all for.
They have two other, for the Dunkin' Donuts, it's two other way, two other access points.
Yeah, there are two access.
Kind of like the format that we're talking about, even though they can still technically use the shared driveway. All they need is another driveway out there to say it's there. So this can be the same thing, they're not, they don't technically are gonna use that as their main access point.
And I think when you're talking about commercial, we ought to look at having multiple ways to cross from one business to another. Cause that would have eliminated all the lights that we'd get in the center of town if we could have done that.
Oh, true.
What we wanted them to do was for Walmart to put a road over to Stop and Shop in the back.
Yeah.
And for Stop and Shop to do it, but neither one wanted to and there was no way to force it.
Yeah. I get it.
Both plans had it on it. But there was no way to force them to do it.
How was there no way to force them to adhere to what their plans?
Cause you can't make them go to another private property.
It's actually.
Also, they, they didn't get it approved that way?
No, it was approved that they could do it, but we couldn't force them to do it.
Other than the fact that you would say the traffic impact and the mitigation, you would need additional mitigation because the analysis was based on the connectivity.
It went a long time, it went back and forth for a long time.
Yeah.
It didn't. One went in before the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So now you can't stop this one. If Walmart won't let them connect.
I get it.
So, I mean, for us to have something in the bylaw. Would make sense. But there's nothing there.
But even that wouldn't have forced them to do it anyway, cause that was still private properties coordinating. Yeah, I'd be all for reviewing some of these conflicts and. Coming to an agreement on what a better way is to write it.
I mean, the, the background of the whole multifamily was, we had two, two projects that came into town and the people got up in arms and wanted to stop it. So that's why it's written, the, I think the, the way it's written is to pretty much, uh.
It's playful.
Keep, keep it so confusing or whatever that nobody does anything.
But I guess you're seeing the problem with it now, they got their approval and all of a sudden now you got an argument down the road after everybody thinks they're okay. Yeah. Did anything happen with that? Was there any sort of follow-up Z B A or anyone else? Or building department? Are we done? Is this meeting over?
Yeah, we're meeting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, uh, yeah, I'm all for taking a look at what we've got, we've got a few issues in there, there's a couple other things.
I think we could use some, some more signage.
Language on the signage?
Seven pages of signage, I think, I think we cleaned some of that stuff up.